Welcome to Belmont Select Board Candidate Debate Town Election 2024. I'm Anne Marie Mahoney, your host for this debate, and I am very pleased to welcome Alex Howard, Jeff Lubian, and Matt Taylor to our debate today. Let's review the ground rules so that everybody knows what we're doing. We're going to start with an opening statement. The gentlemen will have one minute to tell you a little bit about themselves. Then I'll ask a series of questions, and each of the candidates will have up to two minutes to reply. When we're done, if anyone would like to rebut or add an additional comment, that person will have up to one minute. We'll go through as many questions as we possibly can in our hour, and then we will do closing statements again for one minute each. So, gentlemen, very nice to have you here with me.
Thank you.
We're going to have fun. You're going to love it. Let's start with our opening statements, and Alex, we're going to begin with you.
Great. Hi, I'm Alex Howard, running for Select Board, and I'm really proud to be here tonight, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Anne Marie. So, I'm an engineer, I'm a scientist, I'm a dad, all these things. Moved here to Belmont a number of years ago, and it's really a great opportunity to jump in and help the community by being a member of the Select Board. It's a great town, an amazing community with a strong, vibrant culture. I have had a career leading Marines throughout, as a Marine Corps officer. I've led organizations of large and small groups, solving complex problems both in the Marine Corps and in my commercial, civil job as an engineer and scientist. So, on April 2nd, please consider voting Alex Howard. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Jeff?
Hi, excited to be here. Hello, my name is Jeff Lubian. I'm a Belmont homeowner, an economist, and a proud parent of a Belmont Public School student. I feel passionate about the town, and I am deeply concerned about the current fiscal situation we are in, and about building a sustainable Belmont in the future. I think it's important for our leaders to listen, and to listen and let everyone have their say. I value respect, honesty, and common ground. Having served on the warrant committee for nine years, I've built strong relationships with department heads, and even at town meeting, people know that I'm honest and trustworthy when I've had to present information that wasn't even so good. I want the collaboration with our town leaders to continue as we work through this financial crisis, and that's why I'm proud to be a, to have Elizabeth Dion, Mark Palillo, Select Board members, many of the warrant committee, previous town residents, and be associated with my campaign.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much. Matt?
I have knocked on more than 1,000 doors during this campaign, and if I haven't reached your debt door yet, I hope to see you soon. But I want to tell you how I've been starting these precious conversations lately, and each one is a little different. Hi, my name is Matt Taylor, and I'm running for Select Board. My daughter goes to Burbank, my son goes to Chenery. I'm a data nerd, and I don't mind being called that. I'm on town meeting now, I'm on the warrant committee now. But before I was running for Select Board, I built my own website to make our town more explainable to every resident. It has things like a visual budget, where you can see how money is spent at the top level, or drill all the way down to the budget line items, so you can understand where the dollars go. And because that's how I think local government should work. And now I'm here to chat with you, because that's also how I think local government should work. You can learn more about me at mattforbelmont.com, and I give them a flyer to share more.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, let's start with our first question. First question sort of is easy. What is your position on the override? But let me add a little depth to it. A majority of the warrant committee wanted $6.5 million or less for an override. Select Board chose to put 8.4 on the ballot. Could we, in fact, manage with less? Jeff, you're up.
Thanks, great question. So, I'm fully supportive of the override. Correct that the majority of the Select Board or Warrant Committee wanted 6.4. You actually need 7.4 for the three years, just to meet the financial gap we have. So, that is the obligation that would provide just keeping the lights on and maintaining the level of services we've come to enjoy. And so, the Select Board added an additional amount of monies on top of that to 8.4 with two key investments, and I believe in these investments that will help in the long term. First, $250,000 will go to sidewalks, that will more than double our sidewalk budget to $500,000, and we desperately need to invest in our sidewalks. The other is providing the schools and our new superintendent, Dr. Jill Geiser, with additional money to start bringing more in-district special education services. I think if some of you have seen in the school committee, there was an independent report done by an outside consulting group that reviewed our special education in district and out of district, and it was pretty scathing. It showed that we, compared to other schools, outsource our special education more than anyone else, and we needed to provide more early intervention and more in-district services. First of all, it's much better for the students. They're not traveling on a bus an hour each way, and they're able to be in the same building with their students, and to be able to do extracurricular activities. In the long run, this will pay for itself. So, I think, yes, this is a hard ask, the override. I know many people, this is going to be a challenge. I have to make financial decisions based on it. But it's part, most of it is just to meet where we've been because of the situation we're in, but it's also some key investments for the future that will make Belmont a better place for all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Matt?
Hi, I appreciate the question, Anne Marie. I appreciate being here with you and all of you out there. I am one of the warrant committee members who supported the 8.4 amount, for many of the reasons that Jeff just mentioned, so I won't repeat those. I thought he said it quite well. When I'm talking to residents, and I've talked to a lot of them, even before I was running and before I was on town meeting, it's why people ask me to join town meeting. Our residents experience debt exclusions and overrides in a very similar way, and they don't feel the difference. It's all higher taxes. So, this is an incredibly big ask, and I am empathetic that it will be the last straw for many residents. Before I was running, I mentioned senior tax relief at the November Budget Summit, in part because the conversation around senior tax relief had been deprioritized, and the working group on the Warrant Committee had not been staffed to continue working on this issue, just when I think it is most urgent. This override is making important investments that will give us a bridge to make a more sustainable community, and it's part of why I looked through all the municipalities in Massachusetts and identified that a 10% commercial tax base is where we can start shifting the tax burden from, for all practical purposes, from residential properties to commercial properties. At a 10% threshold, communities give about an 8% tax discount, and I think this is the most urgent and precious goal for our community, because affordability is deeply important to me. And a 5% commercial tax base, like what Belmont has right now, 5% and declining, is pitting neighbor against neighbor, and I hear that at every door. It is making it hard for us to fund our schools and our services, and progress on this goal, data shows, will sustain and help us keep up with costs without additional taxes, and I'm offering you that alternative.
Thank you very much. Alex, your thoughts?
Thanks, Anne Marie. Well, Matt and Jeff have made great comments, and I agree. So, where I stand, I'm reluctantly in favor, and I will vote yes. But I say reluctantly because no one that I know of loves to pay more taxes, right? That's just not a common thing that people are signing up to do. Understand that the cost of not doing it will cost us more in the long run than taking it and doing it now. So, really, as we look at the value proposition of the sources, the resources, and the opportunities we have within the town of Belmont, it's really, seems to me, a necessary thing that we need to do. Previous overrides have been hit or miss throughout the years, understand that. But understand that if we do this now, and we do it right, as my friend Sarah have said, that perhaps we can get on the right path to not needing an override in the future.
Very good. Thank you. All right, so in your responses, I'm hearing two themes, which I've included in my questions, which are commercial development and relief for seniors. Let's start with commercial development. We have heard more demands throughout the community for more commercial development to ease our tax burden, as you noted. However, let's think about it. We have had opportunities in the past for tax-rich development that have been stopped by citizens' groups. Where and what specifically would you suggest for commercial development in Belmont? And Matt, this one, we get to start with you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. I love this question. This is the heart of how I started my campaign. I looked at municipalities across all of Massachusetts, and I'm a data nerd, so I look at other towns. I look not just at what they do and what are their practices, but what happened next. And it's the what happened next that makes all the difference, because that's how we identify if something is a practice or a best practice. I also look at property databases. I have the entire Belmont property database. I asked the assessors to share it for me. They were no help, so I had to get it myself. I look at land usage. I look at how we maximize value per acre, and I'll use the Bradford and Cushing Square as an example, formerly Cushing Village. It is, per acre, 13 times more valuable than a large residential lot. We're talking about a building that is parking underneath, it is commercial on the first floor, and residents above. And that is where the kind of new growth that can come from. But it took us 20 years to build that building, and our own processes and ad hoc project review added multiple years to that 20. So, we have to get out of our own way. We need a lot of zoning reform, but I'm leading with this on my campaign, and I started this way back in December. I was the only one who had any policy around commercial development on my website through the middle of February. And I'm leading with this because I want all of Belmont and all Belmont voters to have an alternative to weigh in, and your vote on April 2nd for Matt Taylor is an endorsement that you want all of Belmont to fix the structural problem that underpins most of our challenges and most of our missed opportunities. Employees can't live in Belmont because they can't find places to rent, and they can't afford to buy. That makes hiring harder. Seniors can't downsize or find missing middle housing. Your vote on April 2nd shows the entire community wants to move forward in this sustainable path. I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Alex, what are your thoughts?
I think Matt hit on it very well. I believe that really this comes down to an issue of zoning. We need to upzone and zone appropriately. I believe that higher density, mixed-use spaces alongside the completion of a community path would provide exactly that great opportunity, business opportunities and investments from outside sources, that also we can boost that, get to that 10% base that Matt referred to. I think that that is a key element to the continued success and where we need to be going.
Okay, very good. Jeff?
So, a lot has been said. Third on this one, and I agree with the majority of it, so I'm going to tackle it a little bit differently. First, zoning is key, and we've started to move forward with significant zoning reforms, and I think that that is key to bringing us closer to being more commercial-friendly. I also think, though, and in particular, we need to manage the MBT community situation so that we don't cringe on too much or at all on commercial space. I also think we need to do an economic impact, which the Select Board, current Select Board is doing, to understand how can we, how can we frame things in terms of the residents and in terms of potential developers, of what is the right amount of commercial development. I agree, getting to a 10% is where we want to go. It's going to be a challenge, it's going to take time. And I think another area that we need to focus is on the relationships with the different groups within the town, because one of the biggest hindrances to zoning change, to providing more commercial development, to what Anne Marie had pointed out, is different interest groups that have voiced their opinion. Several years ago, there was an idea to build a small boutique hotel on Pleasant, on Route 60 and Route 2. There was strong opposition against that, and this is where my experience working with different groups within the government and within the residency will allow for us to have those conversations and make those tough decisions when it comes to bringing in more commercial. And finally, I think the other thing we have to do is sell Belmont. You know, let's create a marketing plan. Let's pitch Belmont for what it is, it's close to the city, small-town charm, a good base of people, and that are interested in having commercial development and more investment in their community to help offset their tax burden. So, I'm all for developing a detailed marketing plan, and as a Select Board, I will go out and pitch Belmont to different investors. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, let's move on to our seniors, and I almost have to reveal, I'm one of those seniors, the proverbial little old lady living on a fixed income. I spent a long time living in Belmont, and I'd like to stay here. But the COA budget, Council on Aging, is only about $400,000 a year and could well be cut. We're asking for tax relief, you all have mentioned that, and in addition, some over-55 housing. What are your specific suggestions for supporting seniors, and how could those suggestions actually be implemented and funded? And for this one, Alex, we start with you.
Wow, great question. So, I think Matt touched on it in his opening comments, that we do need tax relief, and we do need opportunities for seniors to remain where they've grown up, where they are, and still have the same quality of life, and still be able to experience and have the resources that the town of Belmont offers. And to be able to do that, I believe that we need to preserve the budget and allow for intelligent growth in those resources as the community ages, as we see that the population demographics are aging. That might change, but currently, that's where we are, and I think that it's important to get ahead of it now, so that we don't have to come back later with a spontaneous response. But if we plan appropriately now, we can provide and budget to allow that these breaks to allow the resources for the seniors to be successful here.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Back to you, Jeff.
It's very concerning, you know, a lot I hear from a lot of seniors out there on the campaign, and I'm really concerned about their, you know, their sustainability here in Belmont with the recent debt exclusions, as well as now this proposed override. You know, a lot of work has been, a lot of work has been done to look at what senior tax relief could be. It is challenging in terms of how you have to go about it with the state. I mean, there are options that I think we need to be more vocal about in terms of, there's a work-off program, there's deferments, although I fully understand that deferments are a bit restrictive in the sense that if you have a reverse mortgage, you're not able to have that, your taxes need to be paid. We did town meeting several years ago lower the tax, the interest rate from 8% to 4.5% on deferring to the sale of the house. And then also, there is some exemptions, but they're not tremendous, and there's also a circuit breaker through the state. But most in Belmont don't qualify for that circuit breaker because it's under a, you have to have a value of a house under $800,000. So, what I propose we do, and this was preliminary work was done by the Warrant Committee some years ago, looking at this, is that I think as a Select Board member, I would be a proponent of creating a working group, a committee, temporary committee, right away, that tackles all these issues. And what I would look to do is to formulate a plan to increase the tax exemption. First, it would have to be voted on by town meeting, so something proposed to town meeting to vote on, and then it would have to be a home rule petition, the state legislator would have to sign off on it, and then eventually it would be a town-wide vote. And I think we need to really look at that and try to give serious relief on the taxes to seniors. In terms of the Council on Aging, that budget is a very small percentage of the overall town budget, and I do have concerns if the override fails about the cuts that will take place there. And as Select Board, I would, I would review those cuts.
All right, good, thank you. Matt, your thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, Anne Marie. I think about this all the time. I'm going to say this very clearly and plainly, and then I'm going to say it again because it's so important. Affordability for seniors in Belmont is a core value of mine. Affordability for seniors in Belmont is a core value of mine. It is not linked to passing or refuting a debt exclusion or an override. It is a core value of living in a community that is multi-generational. I sat down with a neighbor of mine many months ago, and she walked me through the application process she had to go through to get a few hundred dollars off of her taxes. When we reach a 10% commercial tax base, we're talking about broad-based affordability, no intrusive application, no intrusive questions, tax discount of about 8% is what it looks like, across the board, for everyone. But that is, say, 10 years away. So, what do we do in the meantime? A core value of mine is affordability for seniors in Belmont. And so, we need to pass, as Jeff said, a home rule. This is something that will take a couple of years, and this is why we should start it now. We should have started years ago. This is a core value of mine, and I'm going to follow through. I mentioned this in the November Budget Summit before any campaigns had started. I didn't even know if Mark was running or not, because it is a core value of mine, and I will follow through. One of the things that we have to do is a lot of these thresholds were set when all that seniors had was often their husband's social security and their husband's pension. And I'm constantly reminded of things like, as recently as 1974, women had to get a male cosigner in order to get a credit card. I was born in 1978. This is living memory in Belmont. The economic opportunities available to our seniors have radically changed, and they need support, and I believe this is a core value that town meeting will stand up and resoundingly pass the same way we did for Blue Star families.
Very good. Thank you. Would you, Alex, would you like to rebut or comment?
I would, yes. So, yeah, hearing the, both of these responses, that it's mired in process, right? We can all see that, and it's not an easy process. I think Jeff outlined it very well. But we need to do our part, and as a Select Board, we need to lead the process with time-driven metrics, to understand how we can do this in a time-relevant manner, but also ease the burden. So, it doesn't, it's not complicated or overly complicated. The process gets complicated on its own. So, how do we, as leaders, ensure that the Council on Aging and the seniors are able to navigate this process easily and quickly?
Very good. Thank you. Yes, Jeff?
I would just like to add, first, which camera am I? Because I'm...
Three.
Three, okay, thank you. Thank you for that. I just wanted to add, I think the other thing we need to do, and I don't think this has been done enough, and maybe it's because of time or just there isn't that desire. I want, I want the Select Board to have more open communication with our seniors and with the Council on Aging, and hear their concerns, and have more dialogue, and educate what we can currently do, because I don't think a lot of folks know that, and then what we're looking to do. And I think it's key about communicating and partnering with our seniors, so we're able to let them know that we're thinking about the issue.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, I'm going to shift topics a little bit now. I'm interested in your position on elected versus appointed assessors, because that's another issue that's going to be on the ballot. And frankly, I don't want to hear about the Collins Report. I follow along with Mark Palillo, who says, "It's not the Bible." So, let's not talk about the Collins Report. I want to know what you guys really think. And on this one, Jeff, we're, no, wait, yeah, that's right. Jeff, we're starting with you.
Great. I will not reference that report.
Thank you.
First off, first and foremost, I was supportive of the treasurer moving to an appointed position, and I think that move is shown to be a good move and benefited the town. We've revamped the office, there's been a lot of standardization and modernization on that. And again, no disrespect to the former Select Treasurer. He served this town great, and I fully appreciate his, his advice when I was coming up and learning more about the town. From the Board of Assessors standpoint, I am for going to an appointed Board of Assessors. That is not an indictment of the current assessors. I think they're great. Several of them are the best, considered the best in the state, and if, and if this passes, I hope that they will throw their hat in and be, and look to be appointed. What I do think this does, along with some of the other initiatives that we will put through, is to future-proof the town. It's hard to find key qualified people in this position. Right now, we have them, but in the future, who knows? And so, this allows the Select Board, who would be the appointing authority, again, I'm going to repeat that because there's a lot of misinformation out there. The Select Board is the appointing authority of, would be, the appointed authority, and it allows them to draw from a larger pool of candidates. And I think, again, that sets us up for success in the future, because it's becoming harder and harder to find people that want to work or volunteer in municipal government. And so, I think that's key. I also think it'll allow for better collaboration, which I also think is key, which is very key also to the senior tax relief that we talked about. You will need to get a lot of data from the assessors and some, and some good conversations. And that committee that I'm committed to do, to forming as a Select Board member would involve members of the Select Board. So, overall, I think it's the right move for the town.
All right, thank you. Matt, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Anne Marie. I support the switch to appointed by the Select Board, Board of Assessors. As I said in town meeting, I think that the assessors, the current board, does an excellent job on the technical aspects of the role. It is really hard to project within 10% the sales value of homes when there are so few home sales in Belmont. But what is missing is the everything else, and it's the everything else part of local government that I am so passionate about. It's the communication, it's the understanding. As I said at town meeting, many residents relate to their local government through the taxes that they pay, and understanding the taxes that they pay is a core part of rebuilding trust and relationship. And coming out of the pandemic, I deeply feel that separation, and I want to rebuild that. And I think it is virtuous. I keep tolding, I keep getting told that it's hard to get residents to engage with their local government, and I answer to that, is there is virtue in trying, and I'm going to keep trying and show that this is really important to me. Understanding our taxes, the software that we have for the property database is ancient, and we need to update it. I tried to get data so that I could look at property and economic opportunities, and I had to go get it myself. Having a unified finance team helps us serve our residents better, and one of my core values is that we serve all of Belmont. The oath is to the betterment of Belmont, and I hold that in my heart every day. I show that I update what I think and learn based on new information, and part of that is following through for you, to make sure that we are professionalizing our services and modernizing how we operate, to serve you more effectively, to spend your dollars well, and to show you that we're spending those dollars well, and then keeping you in the loop while we do it. So, I urge you to approve switching the assessors to appointed and unify our finance team so that we can serve you better. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Alex, your turn.
Well, I almost feel like I had to say something different, but the reality is, I wholeheartedly agree. I think that the assessors should be appointed. They absolutely should, because it's the right thing to do. It's about finding the right people for the right job, and understanding that, yes, while we are fortunate now to have assessors that are experts, we may not always be in that position. So, it's better to have a team that we can appoint that has the ownership, the responsibility, and the authority that we need, because we put a lot of faith and confidence in that Board of Assessors. And we base a lot of our decisions on the outputs that they produce. And part of that, yes, is making sure they have the right tools for the job, making sure they have the updated softwares and the best practices of how to do that. And so, I believe that by appointing those positions, that we can find the true subject matter experts that we need to ensure the long-term success of Belmont.
Okay, very good. Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, I've heard a lot of talk lately about fines that Belmont has faced due to not paying, setting aside taxes, and I think this is a good example of inefficiency that we have found, and that by hiring professionals, we have uncovered it and rectified it. And in part with the treasurer's office, we have now have a professional treasurer who is appointed, and that that person has finding new efficiencies. We've removed a position, and so they're operating more effectively, and this is part of unifying our finance team so that we've served residents better. And then in the meantime, our town is negotiating to reduce these fines so it doesn't happen again. And when you negotiate with the IRS, a big part of that is showing that you've gotten your processes in order so that it's not going to happen again. And that's our Belmont government updating and improving to serve you better, and this is core to my values.
All right, thank you. Do you want to go ahead?
Just one comment along those lines. One thing I strongly believe is the Select Board should provide open conversations and cover for our town employees, and I want to make it clear that these mistakes that Matt has mentioned with the IRS happened under the previous treasurer, and the new treasurer and the administration was not responsible for this. And I want to make, I think that's clear to make, they are solving the problem. They are solving the problem, but they were not the root cause of this, and it's unfortunate it happened. But because of their due diligence and leadership, they are rectifying the issue, and we're going to move forward and not have this happen again.
Okay, very good.
Totally agree.
All right, shifting again, especially given the recent Milton vote, what is your position on the MBTA Communities Act? And really, what I want to hear is what do you think would work for Belmont, that would be good for Belmont, that Belmont would accept? And on this one, we start with Matt.
Yeah, thank you. So our housing challenges are very much entangled in having a 95% residential tax base. And the MBTA communities, I just want to acknowledge, this is terrible branding. Nobody is associating the MBTA with efficient, you know, modern, effective, on time, right? But what we are talking about from a practical standpoint is zoning. Zoning for missing middle housing that gives housing choices in Belmont. And this zoning would allow the free market to build this missing middle housing if it is profitable for developers to do so. And if it is not profitable for developers to do so, they won't build it. And this is both good news and bad news. I support the committee's process for starting out with a wide net to identify possible candidate parcels and neighborhoods and think holistically about the mix of those neighborhoods. I support their process of giving the community time to weigh in on those proposals and possibilities as they narrow them down. And I support the ultimate result, which I believe will create zoning for housing that is mixed use with incentives and will not hurt our commercial opportunities. And having looked at all the property data in Belmont and having looked at this deeply and at communities around Massachusetts, I see that the property values that have increased the most are near amenities. So when this missing middle housing gets built and we have housing choices that allow seniors to downsize without having to build first-floor bedrooms and widen staircases, it will be near amenities that will create vibrant economic centers in Belmont. This is good for businesses. Local mixed-use housing and economic development are best friends, and we can do this to make our community better the next decade.
Very good, thank you. Alex, what are your thoughts?
Right, so, yeah, it comes down to zoning. It comes down to, we didn't get where we are today overnight. It's been a process over the years of getting where we are. And sometimes in that process, the process gets tangled and it gets a little mired. And so I think that we need to make sure that we're zoning appropriately, rezoning areas, but making the process to do the zoning more efficient and effective. But like Matt said, higher density, mixed-use spaces alongside completion of the community path, for example, to allow the business opportunities, investments, allowing those amenities to be near where people may live and work. You know, we've seen in neighboring towns where, for example, the, you know, the different rail trails or other community paths, we see that the property values do go up near the, near those trails. And we see that it helps the community, it helps the businesses. But also by updating this, we can get closer to that. I believe the goal is 10%, right? And I think we are short of that today, but we need to make sure that we are doing this with a strategic plan to make sure that we are planning appropriately and effectively towards a goal, understanding it's not going to happen overnight. So we have to make sure we have this inch, inchstones in place to make sure that we are staying on the path and not just admiring the process and continuing to research and research, but let's get traction, let's make sure that we, as a select board, we are leading the team to make sure that we are effectively implementing this plan.
Okay, very good, thank you. Jeff, what are your thoughts?
So first, I don't, I do not think it'd be wise to take the path Milton has taken. There would be long-term penalties and consequences. Glenn Clancy just reported on a Safe Roots grant that we received for about $400,000 to help with crosswalks and signaling, and we would not have received that if we were in violation of this. Also, we need, we need, we need to provide more housing. I think the spirit of the, of the legislation makes sense. I think like anything, there's a lot of gray area and confusion, but I do think it's something that's right for Belmont, and we need to move forward. That being said, though, I do think at this stage, given a lot of the gray area and the timing, we have to have something to the state by the end of the year. I think we should, we should meet the minimum requirement, which is, I believe, the 1632. And I think this is good for a couple of reasons. First, Belmont controls its destiny. We don't leave it to the state. We take a measured approach. We do not impose on commercial. I think we should limit that. Only a certain percentage can be mixed use, so we need to make sure that we are balanced there. And then I also think we need to also be responsible in what type of buildings that we want to have built. And I, and I'm very concerned that if we push it past the 1632, we will be setting ourselves up for buildings with many multi-stories. And I think Belmont is a place where we want to have, promote housing, promote MBTA communities, but have sensible development that fits and keeps the small-town charm that we have come to know and love. So again, meeting the minimum requirement, who knows down the path, there might be a three, a four A, a five A, a six A. So again, the measured approach is the balanced approach, and we'll, we'll see how it goes. And there is no necessary to rush into this.
Okay, very good, thank you. Let me shift again. We've been hearing a lot about compacts, forming compacts with the voters over spending and budgeting. The reality is, we already had compacts with the voters around construction and maintenance of our schools and about past override money, for example, for roads and for trash with, with prior overrides. Are we in fact keeping these compacts? And what would you propose going forward? Alex, I think you're going to start us off.
This is a, it's a complex question, right?
I live with the complex questions.
Well, yeah, so it's exactly, we've made promises to, you know, we've, we have a certain set of resources within the town that we have provided, and we've ensured that those are maintained. We need to keep those promises. And as a select board, we need to make sure we're leading the team to make sure we're keeping the promises we have to provide those key resources, whether it's leading schools, the first responders, what have you, even trash pickup, you know, snow removal. All of these things that we have come to appreciate within our town is something that we, that's a promise, and that's something we need to keep and make sure that we are planning appropriately. And part of it is, yeah, the override threatens that. And so by not approving the override, we rush into these things where we can, we could lose some of these key resources and then, in fact, break these compacts. And I think that that's what I talked about earlier, that the cost of not doing the override is, would be more expensive in the long term than the cost of going ahead and doing the override, knowing that if done appropriately and with discipline and with the right leadership, that we can make sure, make sure as best we can, that in the future, we're not coming back to ask for more overrides. There's only so many goes at that well. And as you can see, you know, it does have an impact. Like I said, no one likes to pay more taxes. And so we need to make sure we're doing the best we can with what we've got and understand that we have to maintain those promises and understand that growth comes at an expense, making sure we are growing responsibly within our means and providing the best we can.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, what are your thoughts?
Well, first, to comment about there's been compacts made in the, in the past, especially around maintenance and construction and maintaining our buildings, and we have not lived up to those. We have not, for one reason or another, and other promises that are made, change in leadership, people forget, and there is the reason why we wind up back in a lot of situations where we, we could have prevented it. So this, this situation in particular is, I think, very glaring. We, we need this override. It gives us short-term stability, to pause, to look at where we are, to maintain the level of services that we need. But this is the first step, and it's a big step and a big ask, and I fully appreciate that. But it, the, the work is really after that because the warrant committee, we've shown that if things stay on the same course they are in terms of budgets, revenues, expenses outpacing revenues, in less than three years or close to three years, we're going to be back where we, we are and needing another $5 to $7 million override. And that's not acceptable. And I think the point has already been made that, you know, to go back to that well so soon. So I am spearheading as Chair of the Warrant Committee, and we've been working on this last two meetings, about forming a work advisory group that will come up with a comprehensive compact that has strong commitments of being no, no over, after a successful override, no additional overrides for three years. Looking to get revenues in line, expenses in line with revenues, looking to make sure that we manage one-time funds and reserves so that we're in the best position possible, and, and forming potentially a long-term planning committee that would keep an eye on these longer-term issues and force the town during its budget process to commit to these, to meeting these challenges and reining in the rate of increase of expenses.
Okay, thank you. Matt, how about you?
Anne Marie, I really appreciate this question. Communication and relationship with our residents, and I say residents, but I want to speak more broadly, community members, so that includes our employees who are here as members of our community, is really important. It's rebuilding that relationship. And if we are going to expect a debt exclusion or an override in a couple of years, we should be telling you that now. And I have advocated for this on the warrant committee, and I will continue to do so. I think it is important that we follow through on what we say to our residents. I also am very mindful of my oath to all of you, to all of us, that I serve at your pleasure for the betterment of Belmont. And a lot has changed in the past, say, 35 years since we passed the, the trash override. So there's a lot going on, and we have to constantly be assessing, how are we doing? Is it working for our residents? Having a two-way dialogue with you about how we are doing and serving you every day? And it's re-winning that relationship that says, not only are we really excited about the future of Belmont, but focusing on the commercial growth, the new growth, making a plot of land 13 times more valuable so that we can grow and keep up with rising costs without coming back to the residents. So much of our challenges, and I feel this tension, neighbor pitted against neighbor, people who moved here for the schools but then struggle to afford these debt exclusions and overrides, or people who, you know, really want to support and see the gaps in our municipal departments and in our schools but don't want to force out their neighbors. I sat in on almost every department head budget beating this year. I'm the only warrant committee member who does this. I did it last year, too. And I see our municipal departments are run on a skeleton crew. They're doing a lot with a little. They're wearing a lot of hats. And more than anything, they want resources and breathing room to serve us residents more proactively. So we must follow through for our residents. We must be efficient, and I will make sure that we do this for you.
All right, thank you. Now, I've got a little bit of a tricky question, but nonetheless, I think very, very important. The select board has a vote on all contract settlements with the school department. Given the current climate in the state, particularly relative to the Massachusetts Teachers Association, can you negotiate contracts that would be in the best interest of the town? And therefore, are you willing to take a teacher's strike to hold the line on salaries? Jeff?
That is, that is a delicate question. Obviously, yes, the environment has been very tricky. Labor relations have been challenged across all the towns, and it's, makes up a majority of the town budget, and therefore, it's very important when we have those discussions. I am for fair pay and people being compensated. These are our employees, and we should show the respect and appreciate what they do for us. I think many parents appreciated how much teachers do when COVID, and we had children at home 24/7, and appreciate what they do for us and now what they're doing for us now after the pandemic with all the challenges that came from that. And so I think negotiations have to be in good faith. I think we need to lay out all the facts in terms of what the town can afford, and that's why this compact is going to be so important, is that it's going to show that this town is committed to reining in expenses while, while meeting the obligations for the residents and being respectful to employees. And so I think that being in place and a strong commitment to that is going to help with the negotiations. I think we should be able to have open conversations about the COLA adjustments as well as steps and lanes with the teachers. I don't want it to come to a strike. I've been through a strike with my own family. My father was on strike. He was working for utilities when there was a lot of privatization. He was on strike for a year. We had to sell our house and move to a different town and, and forego a lot of things. My mom got a part-time job. I mowed lawns. My parents needed the money, and I gave them money. And so I don't think a strike is good for anyone. It's not good for the kids. It's not good for the town, and it's not good for the teachers, and they don't want it. So I have no problem rolling up my sleeves and jumping in there and doing everything possible to find a fair, equitable negotiation and avoid a strike at all costs.
Okay, thank you. Matt, how about you?
Yeah, you know, I feel this one deeply. I think I'm the only select board candidate that will still have children in Belmont Public Schools at the end of the next BEA contract. I deeply feel that we need to have an effective, efficient school system that serves all children well and also takes care of our employees. And then we must also sustain the community around our schools because we need to take care of those employees as well. And the way we take care of our employees is to grow the pie and help us pay them. We need to grow the pie so that our contracts and our pay is actually competitive with the surrounding towns. Look, I, I was a big contributor in our warrant committee report on both the enrollment and the staffing sections of our report, as well as making visuals to explain how the contracts are laid out and how they grow year over year. I added visuals so that you residents and all town meeting members could better access the important information that we were dealing with. And I talk about this because these people are on our team. They are members of the Belmont community, and we need to take care of them. And the way we take care of them is we make the pie bigger. I want to talk about Newton. I think Newton is on everyone's mind. Newton is in some sense looking into the future if we do not grow the pie because our contracts may not be competitive. But it is actually a little rosier because we don't have as much free cash as Newton has. So in that sense, we're going to control spending because it's happening to us. We have to pay a balanced budget. We have to have our costs match our expenses, and we don't have enough free cash to do what Newton did. I'm the only select board candidate that is endorsed by any of the current school committee members, and I have a lot of educators who are supportive because I talk about what work we do as care work and with empathy and with admiration, and I am thrilled to help everyone in our town serve our residents effectively.
Thank you. Alex, oh, all right, I need, Alex needs to talk first.
So what I'm hearing here, obviously overwhelming support, and I'll tell you, across the board, I feel that teachers, educators are woefully underpaid for the work that we entrust them to do. We, you know, entrust them to our children's education, the way they're upbringing, the interactions, developing our children. I do have a four-and-a-half-year-old, so he, he will be in school at the end of the contract, and I'm looking forward to that. And in fact, the, our schools in Belmont are a source of pride for our town, and then, you know, that brings many people here. That's, that's one of the key reasons I moved to Belmont amongst many other reasons. But that was primarily the, one of the biggest ones is where am I going to have my son grow up and be educated? You know, New England's known for having great schools, but how do we make sure that, you know, which towns, and there is a difference? And we have to make sure we are being smart about that. And now, now having said that, we do have to be smart and make sure that the pay is competitive. Obviously, we all understand that we can't pay what we want to pay. And we obviously want to pay, you know, and compensate these educators for what they're doing and what we're asking to do. But with that, yes.
Okay, all right. I think you got, cut a little short there, but all right. Yes, rebuttal.
Two comments. First, and Alex corrected, he will have a student in there, but I, I will personally say, I don't, I don't think that matters for me. But yes, my daughter will be graduating in three years, and then I'll have even bigger bills to pay with college. But of course, that's what we do. So I don't think that matters. I think, and then a lot of people in this town who do not have kids or kids who have gone through the district support the schools because they know it adds to the community. So I think that is, is not a relevant statement. And I will also say then, I hear Matt about growing the pie, the commercial base, completely agree. One of the challenges, I think, is that takes time. We're getting some more zoning through in the spring, and these negotiations are going to come up sooner than later. And so how much that pie increases between now and then is to be seen. And I think that's why making sure that we control expenses and do the best we can with the, with the resources we have.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Can we go three for three?
Sure. Sure. Okay, all right. Just remember, we're reducing the number of questions, though, by doing this, so go ahead.
Part of our budget discussions central around what I think has become a reinforcing and self-fulfilling divide and tension, where we talk about the municipal side and the school side as if they are at odds. But this is an us issue. Belmont wants schools that do an excellent job educating all children, and we want an excellent community around those schools. And so as someone who is bridging that divide, it is so urgent that we have that on the Select Board at this moment, at this juncture, for our community, because it sets us up to save the most effective path going forward for a sustainable future. This is a moment where we can heal these relationships and build an effective bridge that not just solves for our initial challenges, but builds lasting relationships and a new way of working on the budget together that serves all of Belmont and for the betterment of everybody in our community.
Okay, very, very good. Sure, go ahead.
And adding, actually adding on to that, I think that we need to address this and treat it the same way we do as our first responders, police, fire, the way we prioritize those conversations. That's how I believe that we need to engage with our teachers and educators and on that same level, and understanding that they, it's just as important, if not more.
Okay, very good. I'm going to ask one last question, and I don't want to lose sight of capital, because we all know I'm the queen of capital. You just can't get through without capital. So I'm going to ask this kind of as a two-part, and you can choose what you want to answer. Capital needs are ever-growing, as we know, and so I would be interested in what your capital priorities would be and how you might fund them, and/or overall, what do you see as the most pressing needs or pressing problem facing the Select Board, and how would you solve it? So this is sort of your choice question here. Capital or most pressing problems, or maybe they're all blended together? Matt, we're going to start with you.
Thank you. So our capital infrastructure is everything. It underpins everything else we do in our community and is a big part of quality of life. And we have, in many ways, neglected it for decades. It's not any generation's fault. It's not any one person's fault. My family settled in Belmont in 2014. In the 25 years preceding that, two and a half decades, we averaged $60,000 a year on sidewalks, just $60,000 a year. We have 95 miles of sidewalk in Belmont, and just getting the concrete alone is $5 million. That's no work, that's no machines, that's no time, that's no people. We have a lot to do. I'm also a data nerd, and one of the things I bring to the warrant committee is I look more broadly. I surface things that are not put in front of us. I find things that should be visible, and how do we make them explainable? Things like the, and I very much have a great relationship with the Comprehensive Capital Budget Committee, where they are servicing things that are not as visible as the sidewalks. I've jogged every street in our town, and I have tripped on your sidewalk. I have twisted my ankle in your pothole, right? I've seen it all. But we also don't have as much visibility into our buildings. And so it's managing and communicating with the residents to help you understand where our exposures are, because if we keep neglecting our capital, then we are going to keep having this cycle where we say, huh, how did this happen? How did we not see this coming? It's because we have to look. Our buildings are now really complicated machines. Dave Blaisan and our Facilities Department do an excellent job, but these are now modern computers. They're energy-efficient. They have solar on the roof. These are assets that we must protect and maintain, because that's where we bring our community together, we educate our kids, we take care of our seniors, we bring our people together. I am very supportive of bringing extra visibility to this and then following through for our residents by growing the pie.
All right, Alex, your thoughts?
So for me, it comes down to infrastructure, absolutely. I think Matt touched on it. Things, you know, sidewalks, roads, we have, you know, it's 2024, and we still have exposed power lines in parts of Belmont. It kind of blows my mind, you know, and I understand it is a huge expense, but we don't have to tackle it all at once. And again, if we apply a disciplined approach, we can make sure that we address these issues and kind of attack our aging infrastructure in a smart way so that we're not facing a large bill at the end of the day. We can, you know, take bites of this. And I think that earlier Jeff mentioned increased budget for sidewalks, for example. I know a sidewalk in front of my house needs to be replaced, and who knows when that's going to happen. There's areas in town that don't have curbs. Again, why don't we have sidewalks and no curbs? You know, we're paying double there, you know? If we had curbs, we wouldn't have to face the erosion on the easements there. Things like this, our wastewater and sewer systems are aging and definitely need to be addressed. We recently had, you know, the ecological impact of that, you know, didn't get a great score on that recently. You know, I think that it's, time and resources are both limited, and for each of us as leaders and as a town, the priorities are as much about what we choose to do and what we choose not to do. So I would say I would focus on infrastructure. I would try to figure out things that may not have been seemingly as useful, like the leaf blower ordinance, unenforceable, doesn't really add value to much, seems to be more like an expansion of the noise ordinance. And so why are we doing something like that when we should be focusing our attention on issues that really could move the needle, our infrastructure?
Very good, thank you. Jeff?
I'll probably take a little bit of a hybrid approach here. First and foremost, the challenge with capital is funding. And for years, there hasn't been, has not been enough funds to put towards capital projects. And one thing we've talked about, and part of the compact, but also has been discussed in very detail, is one-time funds. I would have loved to have used a lot of that ARPA for one-time investments in capital projects that we need. For example, one in particular, the channery roof, which I know Anne-Marie knows quite well. It's coming due, and between the roof replacement and the HVAC replacement, I hear quotes as close to $6 million. And folks, it's not because it was mismanaged or not taken care of. It's 25 years old. Time happens. And so how are we going to fund that? And so one area is the one-time funds that come to us, what we call free cash. We've agreed to use a certain amount every year in the operating budget, but any of those funds that come above and beyond that going forward will be put to a stabilization fund for capital or to a capital project in that year. And we have to hold true to that and start building up that reserve so that we are able to fund these projects. I think also, from my friends at the DBW, who I worked with very much, being on the warrant committee, that eventually, the rest of those buildings need to be addressed. It's embarrassing the main building they work in. And then how this dovetails into the biggest challenges facing the Select Board is the financial pressures, with an override or without an override. And without an override, there's going to be some serious challenges, and one of those will be, how do we fund our capital projects and maintain the level of services that we're used to? So I think it's very important that we take a real focus of capital, the investments we need to make. We also need to see the successful completion of the hockey rink and of the library. And then we have to be diligent about maintaining these buildings.
Thank you. All right. Unfortunately, we could keep going with a lot more questions, and I have a lot more questions, but time's running out, and we need to move to our closing statements. So each of you will have one minute for a closing statement, beginning with Matt.
Hi, my neighbors. My name is Matt Taylor, and I'm running for Select Board to offer you an alternative, to offer you the opportunity to say, hey, I would like the next 10 years to be a bit better than the last 10 years. I offer you a data-driven approach and a goal-oriented, action-oriented approach to growing the pie and a 10% commercial tax base. I offer you a relationship and communication and outreach to keep you in the loop. I have executive experience. I was CTO of a startup in Harvard Square, and I've worked with broad amounts of teams to get things done for you with the community in mind. And you can learn more about this at mattforbelmont.com. There's a demo of the visual budget. You can skip the demo and play with the visual budget right away. You can see on Meet Matt, work that I have done with committees and the community to make Belmont a better place, including helping with a crossing guard on Concord Avenue and doing a lot of advocacy around crossing safety, which is in part why we got that Safe Routes to School grant. I ask for your vote.
Okay, very good, thank you. Jeff?
I'm Jeff Lubian, running for Select Board. I'm the only candidate here that has over, almost 10 years of experience on the municipal side and an economist. If elected, I will represent all of Belmont, and I will do everything in my power to get us on stable fiscal ground through being fiscally responsive and also looking to implement long-term plans so that Belmont is on a stable ground for the future. I want my daughter to be able to live in Belmont, from an affordability standpoint and having the resources needed. And I think we need to work together to get these problems solved so that we put Belmont in the best shape moving forward. Through my years of service, especially as Chair of the Warrant Committee, I've built long-lasting relationships with employees, department heads, other committee members that are going to be needed to implement these changes, because change is hard, and you need collaboration and compromise, and being able to lead and listen to others and to be able to work together. And those are the skills I've learned.
All right, very good, thank you. And last but not least, Alex, your turn, final word.
Thank you. I'm Alex Howard, and I'm running for Select Board, and it would be an honor to serve Belmont as a member of the Select Board. You know, I've shown over my years of experience in both the Marine Corps as an officer and my commercial side, as a research scientist and engineer, you know, I've demonstrated being able to lead large teams, small teams, teams, making decisions of consequence to solve large, complex problems, making sure that we are making traction and achieving our goals. Vote for me, it's a vote for making sure that voices are heard. Yeah, it's true, I don't have experience on the town meeting, the town board, the warrant committee, any of that. That offers me a unique, fresh perspective to come in and help Belmont with a pragmatic and logical approach, bringing to bear the experiences I've had that have brought me here to Belmont. So again, vote for Alex Howard, alexforbelmont.com. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your very thoughtful responses. I think this was a good exchange of information. This has been our Belmont Select Board Candidate Debate. I'm Anne-Marie Mahoney. Get out there and vote on April 2nd. Thank you.